Public comment just on 143rd to this portion of the meeting now. If we had given everybody that signed up three minutes, we're looking at about an hour and a half of comments. I am not here to try to keep anyone quiet. So it was offered to me to make this suggestion. If there, Steve had mentioned there are elected officials present. If some of the folks would like to allow their public elected official to speak on their behalf, it may, it may speed up the meeting. You're still welcome to speak if you like, but if there are any elected officials, would you, would you like to come and speak now? And then I will go through this list. Okay. Okay. Well, it sounds like a couple elected officials are willing to give their slot up. So I will just go in order. I have 24, 31 people signed up.
Let them talk first and then we'll just go in order.
Okay.
Over here.
Yeah, please come up to the podium, state your name, and then I will give you three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Board. My name is Christina Nieske Trokey, and I'm the mayor of Homer Glen. First of all, I appreciate you guys taking the time to hear all of us. I don't want to be here for an hour and a half listening to comments, but I believe I share the same sentiments as of most of the people here. Steve Balich and I don't agree on much, but this matter, I absolutely do agree with him on. I did a short survey with the residents of Homer Glen. I know Facebook isn't the perfect way to do surveys, but with the short time span I had, I had about 120 residents respond. Eighty said they wanted a two lane with, two lanes, one lane on each road. Sorry, let's be very clear. One lane on each side with a turn lane. I believe Mayor Daley was the mayor at the time in 2009, and I was a township trustee back then, I believe. He did want to make 143rd a commercial corridor at that time. Unfortunately, that is not what it is. We have many residents that back up to 143rd or face 143rd, or their side lot is on 143rd. As mayor, I have to protect every resident regardless of where they live. I'm sure you guys remember the outpour of Hadley, Parker, Shai Bloom. It's the same thing. Homer Glen doesn't want to expand. We don't want to be a pass through to Orland, to Joliet, to Lockport. We just, we just like our own little town the way it is. We don't like big government coming in. Jeff, I really appreciate you taking the time to work with us for Hadley Road. And for the record, we are going to keep Hadley, Shai Bloom, and Parker the way it is forever as long as we can. So in my personal opinion, I do agree with the rest of the majority to keep it one lane on each side with a turn lane. Do you guys have any questions for me at all?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
During public comment, we'll just, we'll listen to the comments, and then usually there's no debate between the committee and
Right, I just knew that someone had asked me a question.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Vicki Bosin. I am your Homer Township clerk. And the reason I wanted to make a comment is, first of all, yes, thank you for explaining everything about 143rd because I was not familiar. But if this has been going on for decades, I'm just curious why people were allowed to build on 143rd. Why were they allowed to build their homes on 143rd? If this was going to be more of a commercial development, why were these permits issued? You know, now people are facing a street in their backyard, or like Chris said, inside their yard, in their front yard. I don't think it's fair that we should be taking this property away from these people. And I know you also mentioned something about a bike path. Is this also going to be on 143rd? Because if it is, then we're looking at taking away even more land from these people that live on 143rd. I think the planning was terrible from the start. Again, you're talking about this has been going on for decades. This should have been properly planned a long time ago. And just because we threw away good money doesn't mean we need to throw away some more good money for a bad idea. And that's my only comment. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay. In the queue, let's, let's read off a few names. If you guys want to work your, work your way down to the podium. Kristi Nasser. Vitus. Yes, please. Vitus Urbanus, David Blatchke, Ram Alkaid, Diane Frohneck. And it's very hard to read strange names. Just so you folks know, I apologize. Kristi?
Yep. Hi, I'm Kristi Nasser. I'm 143rd Street. I'm Chris Lynn Farm. I'm on 31 Acres on King Road and 143rd Street. My property will be impacted because they're talking about eminent domain where they're going to be taking my fence down and building the road and then put the fence up. I have livestock, so this is a danger to the community and to my livestock. I wonder too about the people that want to widen this road in this, this room right now. Where do you live? Have you actually seen what goes on on 143rd Street? People come off of 355 and they're still doing 70 miles an hour if they hit all the lights properly. It's also dangerous to the school. It's right across the street from me. I've heard numerous times where people are coming in too fast and I hear the screeching of tires. I understand that the road probably needs to be widened. If you do a lane going in each direction with a turn lane in the middle, that's great. It's going to help me with, I have a trailer full of horses, live animals, that I can't just come across three lanes of traffic and try to turn quickly with animals in there trying to get their, their stability in a trailer. So if you do the three lanes, I understand that. Right now for safety. I know you talk about five lanes being safer. This gentleman was talking about it'd be a safer thing. It's not going to be safer, five lanes. You were talking about four lanes, actually, and this is really five lanes. It's not going to be safer because I've seen in other communities where people are two lanes going one way and two lanes going the other way. It's going to be just a highway again. It's just going to be like a freeway, and they're going to be going 60, 70 miles an hour. And I know because I've, I've gone out there with some times with people hit the lights properly on 355 and they're going towards Orland Park. They're not stopping in Homer Glen to shop. They're going 60 miles an hour because I pulled on my driveway and I sat on their butts and I've actually driven 60 miles an hour behind them. And they're, and I followed them all the way through to La Grange Road. They do not want to stop in our community. So, and I appreciate all the different comments too about the safety. We want to take that, I think that area, if it comes down and you squash that area down and slow the, the speed limit down, people are going to go slower. I am from Burr Ridge. They wanted to do this on County Line Road. We lived on County Line Road, just north of Plainfield Road, and they wanted to widen County Line Road from I-55 all the way through, through Hinsdale and go, because, so people could go to 294 and avoid the turn off of I-55, 294. We fought it, and we won. We kept it two lanes, country, which 143rd in this little area is. It maintained our values of our property. In fact, it increased the values of our property. And if you take this land away from people and widen this to five lanes, you will cut our property values down like you've never seen before in your entire life. I'm on 100, I'm on 31 Acres. I do not want to see my property value go down. I wanted to keep it, maintain it or increase it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Vitus Oribonos. I live in Pebble Creek subdivision. My property backs up onto 143rd Street. You're talking about having a truck lane or a truck route on 159th Street, which I guess it designated as a truck route. I can tell you right now that the amount of truck traffic that goes behind my house makes it impossible to watch TV with the windows and doors open in the summertime. It's already just terrible. The question that Kristi brought up about the property value, I think is a valid one. And the question that I have about that is, if you're going to go ahead and take away part of my property as eminent domain and give me some pittance of an amount, significantly lower the value of my property, how is that going to affect my taxes, my property taxes? Are they going to go down appropriately or proportionately? That's what I'd like to know. And, and I really don't want to see that median. A turn lane would be fine as Mr. Balich has, has proposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is David Blatchley. I'm the business manager at District 92. We're made up before schools. We have one of our schools, Reed, right on 143rd. It's been there since the 1960s. Right now, what we have is a safety issue when we do dismiss students. So we have parents, we have about 40 different cars that pull into that lot before school, after school, plus we have 12 buses that pull in and then leave after school. So right now, we pay for a service after school to stop traffic on 143rd so that we can get buses out of there and, and parents and staff. So I think from this, the security issue that I see for us getting buses out of there, because we have kids coming from Lockport, we can't send buses to the right. It can't be only a right turn out of there. So we have to send buses west. And so that'll be a concern of getting over those, those extra lanes, I think for us is, is something that we're really worried about. So again, thank you for the opportunity to come and speak.
Thank you. Diane Frohneck, Elizabeth Hadlock, Sue Stellan, and Angel Shake, if you want to make your way down. Thank you. Good morning.
Diane Frohneck is my wife, and she asked me to speak for her.
Okay.
I'm Ray Alcala. I signed up also.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. And so our main concern is we have property right at the entrance to Spring Creek Woods. And like everyone else, you get tailgated. You can't get in your driveway. You can't get out of your driveway. But we, we also have a property on State and 171 in Lockport. And it, they have been talking about putting a turnaround there at New Avenue. And we have a divided highway, so we have to make a U-turn every time we want to leave. So we've gone through this before. And we also travel quite a bit to the east, but we take 159th. And if I'm doing the speed limit, there's people doing 70. So everyone who's gone to Orland on that road knows that it's occurring on 159th. If they widen 143rd, it's going to be the same thing. You're going to have the same jerks doing the same thing, creating more traffic hazards rather than reducing. Now, we do need some changes. You know, they do need maybe a couple lights, maybe a third lane. But this project, I was at those early meetings, and I don't quite agree with everything that was said. There was a lot of contested and angry residents at the three meetings that were held at the school. And I was at every one of them. And yes, there was some, there was some positive points. Yes, we need to change things. But I don't think anyone thought about, back in 2012, about what was going to happen 12 years down the road. You know, we didn't have the foresight. And that's what the government's trying to do is to look 20 years from now and look to 2050. However, in the meantime, the, the road is going to move up within 20 feet of our front porch. And there's a lot of residents that can't afford to lose the land. And, and one of the other zoning laws is if you have a 1.5 acres, you can subdivide your property. Well, with the easement, our property will no longer be over 1.5 acres. So now instead of having two properties, we technically will only have one. So there's a lot of this going on. And I don't think, I don't think that any of us had the foresight in 2012 to see what could potentially happen. But we have the foresight now. And since we're all here and we're all talking, we're all adults, I think maybe we can make a little bit better plan. So if you lose $7 million, you just reapply for a different project and get $7 million. You know, you're not going to be able to transfer that money. I understand that. And I know there's a lot invested already, a lot of time. But we're talking about lives and people's homes. You know, one of the things we have in America is the right to have a home and to own property. And even if your property taxes are ridiculous, you still have that right to move somewhere else. So if we all moved out of the city and came out here to be in a beautiful homestyle community, and now, you know, we have 100 year old oak trees, and now it's going to be gone. So thank you for the time, and thank you to the board for allowing us to speak.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Sue Stylin. I'm a trustee for the village of Homer Glen. And I'm also here to speak on the Hadley project. But since you called up my name, I would like to emphasize also that we have residents that do live in the sections where the road was widened to the four lanes. And they do complain that it didn't improve safety, that cars are just speeding by, and it has made their lives more difficult instead of improving it where the road was widened. Also, I was an employee of the village back in, well, no, in 2010. And I do remember surveys in 24, 13, 14 taken with our residents. And there was a sentiment at that time that the residents didn't really feel that they were heard by the county. And there was also push by some in the administration that would have liked to see, see commercial development along 143rd. And I think time has told. It is now 2023, and that development hasn't happened. The residents have continuously voted for the rural character of the village. And I can just only emphasize that they still feel that way. And I hope you do too. Thank you.
Joseph, Noah Bilsk, Lil Bilsk, Diane Delaney, Andrew Pennelli, Dave Wilks. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. I'm Angel Shake. I'm a trustee for Homer Township. As much as I would like to stand up here and complain for myself because I'm also an angry resident and a concerned parent. But I'm going to represent our residents right now. So I understand that infrastructure development is crucial for the progress, you know, progressing forward. And we're looking, you know, into 2040. I understand all this. But we need to critically evaluate the implications that this is going to have on our safety of the community. We have the fire department that's going to have to get their trucks out. We have two schools there. We have the church there. There is no way that this is going to slow things down. And with, you know, you're going to have traffic speeding. We have it on 159th now. I know as a parent of a relatively new driver, I'm constantly telling my son, yes, you have to go with the flow of traffic. But when they're doing 70 down 159th, don't go with the flow of traffic. You know, it's dangerous. And there's kids that, I understand now they're talking about sidewalks. Okay, well, there's no room for sidewalks, or we would have had sidewalks. Our kids, you know, there's 14 year old kids that, you know, can't drive yet, and they're in that in-between stage. They're riding their bikes down 143rd. You want to put trucks, you know, you say that it's not meant to be trucks, but if it's there, they're going to use it. And do we even want people speeding? I don't want people speeding past people's kids. You know, I'm not at that point right now because my son's in a car now driving, but I don't want people speeding past people's kids. There are actually people that walk to work that work at Jewel, and they walk down that route. It's just not a good idea. When you say this has been going on for decades and you guys got this extra $7 million, give it back. You have no problem taxing all of the residents for any other reason. If we have to pay more taxes, well, at least we're going to be safe. So just tax us for the $7 million. And you break it up over all the houses. And I hate to say that, but I think we'd rather have everybody safe. You know, I feel like everybody is reiterating the same sentiment. These people moved in, okay, we didn't have as many residents since this started two decades ago, even since the, the warehouses were brought in in 2012. All right, people were allowed to build houses. We have a new area going up right behind Old Oak. Why are all these people spending the money to build houses? They're paying their taxes. I struggled as a single mom for years to pay taxes that I couldn't afford so I can keep my house and keep my kids in a good community. There are so many people that are in the same boat. And there are so many people that are coming off saying, help us, help us. All we want you to do is really consider the implications on our community because, you know, maybe 10% of the people feel this is a good thing, but the other 90% are really concerned. So please consider that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Andy Pennelli. I'm here to talk about Parker Hadley. Did you want me to wait or did, you called my name?
Yeah. These, this, this list of 31 folks, I wanted to give those folks the opportunity to speak on 143rd.
Okay, that's all right. I didn't know whether you were ready for that or not.
Yeah. And then any other, any other item on our agenda, if you wouldn't mind, please waiting till, till the end of public comment. Thank you, folks. Did, we must have had a couple folks that decided not to speak. I called their names. So let's go Eileen Salt, Joe Bargiel, and then Dan Filco, Fielco, John Walters. Thank you, folks. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Dave Wilks. I lived in the area for 50 years. Most of the people I don't know. I was there before Homer Glen became a township, everything else. Okay. Couple problems. This lady over here wants to do, let's say, the impact study for 50 years down the road. Let me give you a little history. They did that DOT, Will County and all that for 130 Fish Street. I'm off 130 Fish Street now. By Friday, that will be four lanes from New Avenue to Archer. Okay? Big problems already. There's already been three people killed on that section of road from Smith to Archer. Okay? It's going to create more problems in traffic. The gentleman there says it's not going to be a truck route. You can't stop it from being a truck route. That's the next problem. All roads in the state of Illinois are considered truck routes. The only thing you can do is put a sign up there with a load limit. And the only thing the cops can do is write them for disobeying the sign. So stopping it from a truck route is bull. You can't do it. Okay? The only way you can stop them from going out there is a bridge that has water on it with a concrete bridge. And that's the next problem. 143rd all the way down, even on me on 130 Fish Street. Gauger, Smith, High Road, all have load limits on them because there are bridges under them trusses. So that's the only road they can stop on. So what's the sense of putting a four lane road in down 143rd? You want to do something to solve the problem of traffic, take Archer and make that four lanes. 90% of the cars on Archer at Bell Road, they cut up Bell Road, they go to 143rd and they cut across because it's only two lanes down Archer. When you get to Archer and Lamont Road, you got four lights. You can't get two trucks through there on them lights. It backs up so bad, it's pathetic. 143rd, the only time there's traffic is like the gentleman said, is when the school lets out and the church lets out. There's not that many cars that go down that section of road. It's a waste of money and time. You can put the turn lane in, which I'm 100% for, especially by the school and that, so they can get the buses out. But to widen that road, it's a joke. 135th, when they put that in, it was in a 10-year impact study through Kyle from Will County DOT. And it does no good. Okay? What happened over there? They did that because Romiaville put a train station on Archer right there at 135th. DOT was, you know, for the traffic for there and for ComEd's thing, which is NRG, which the government shut down because they want this go green. So that plant is gone. Citco's going to be the next one to be gone because they want to go green. So all the stuff from Citco is going to be gone too. And that's the only reason why they widened 130 Fish Street, because they went for this 10-year, 20-year study to see what's going to happen in the area. Doesn't work.
Folks, as you come up, if you wouldn't mind addressing the committee, at this point, it's up to the committee. The director of transportation and his staff is just doing what has been directed. So please address your comments to us sitting up front. Thank you so much. Good mor, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity. It's the first time that I'm, that my husband and I are attending a meeting like this. So my name is Eileen Salt. We live at, on 139th Street in Homer. We are completely against the widening of 143rd for all the reasons that we echo that the mayor and trustees have talked about. We're also, if this were to go through and they're rerouting traffic, on 139th, we have unrecoverable slopes. We don't have soft areas or hard areas. We just have two lanes with a double yellow down the middle. So we have a lot of people walking their dogs, both young and old. And if the 143rd is tied up with expansion, for the number of years that 159th was tied up, it's going to impact our little area as well on 139th. So just sharing feedback from our community and on our street, that it's just not, even just 143rd, it's going to affect all the other, you know, areas that people want to cut through. And our street is already dangerous enough without any place for anybody to walk off safely.
Thank you.
Ditto.
Ditto.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Joe Bargiel. I've been off 143rd and Little Creek Drive. Been a resident over 25 years. When I first moved in here, everything was stop signs, not stop lights on 143rd Street on Bell. And it was a welcome thing that they put in stops, lights finally, because we would get a lot of traffic during rush hour coming down our street to cut over to Parker. But that being said, I didn't move to Homer Glen to, in fact, it was Homer Township back then. It wasn't Homer Glen. If I wanted to move to Orland Park and be congested and everything, I would have. But I wanted the open spaces and everything. I enjoy the open spaces. And one other little thing, every, I agree with what everybody else has said, but my other thing is the runoff, if they make it into this massive five lane monstrosity plus whatever, all the runoff there, the water, we have creeks that are running by us. In, in the 25 years that I've lived there, I've lost 10 feet of creek, of ground on my side of the creek, and so did the neighbor. And I think a lot of it had to do with 159th Street, the widening of that. But they kept telling me, no, it didn't. But I wasn't losing land until after they widened it. Now if they widen 143rd Street, which is right down the block from me, I can just imagine how much land I can lose. I just think it's a waste of money and a waste of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, I'm sorry, Baracki, Berardi, thank you. Nice D, sir. John Bellwitz, Harry Manhart, Martha Manhart, Manahart, Manhart. Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Dan Fielco. I am a trustee in the village of Homer Glen. I am also a precinct committeeman and precinct seven in Homer Township. I'd like to thank the board that you do not have an easy job, or the committee, I'm sorry. I'd like to thank the committee for listening to everybody and what we have to say. When this study was done in 2012, things were a lot different before. Now that 159th Street has been done, and I, as far as I, 159th Street and 143rd Street, nothing had been done at that time. Now that 159th Street has been completed, we can look at it in a different way. We don't need 143rd Street to be improved. What would be happening at this point is you would be taking property away from the constituents in that area and impacting their property values. There are three farms on that road also that you'd be impacting. There's Al the Sheep Farmer. You'd be impacting that. And we're trying to keep the rural characteristics of Homer Glen. And by trying to put down a bunch of concrete and pavement through the middle of our rural area like that, which we're trying to preserve, a lot of the people that are in Homer, or most of the people that are in Homer Glen, moved away from the big city to be in this rural area. And you had mentioned that there was a death on 143rd Street. But that death that happened about a year and a half ago or so was because somebody went over, tried to pass, as you said. But that was, somebody broke the law. They passed one in a no passing zone, and it was on a hill. The other part of that is we did widen between Bell Road and Will Cook Road. And that impact on those people hasn't really improved anything. Matter of fact, it's, it's made things a lot worse. And we still have people complaining about that and how it impacted their properties right there. I don't see that Cook County is going to be doing anything anytime soon from Will Cook Road all the way into Orland Park and how that would impact all the way past St. Michael's and all that other property. So the thing is, we, we are here to represent our constituents, right? And you are here to represent the constituents. I have not found one person yet that is for widening this road. What I have heard is what they'd like to see us do or like to see, be done here with this project. And if you have to cancel it to get, to, and you lose the $7 million, and we, even if you had to start all over, where you would put in the turning lanes. Everybody's for the turning lanes at Cream Road and 143rd Street. That is a problem over there. We could use turning lanes. But we want to keep the rural characteristics of, of our community and to enjoy what we moved out there for and not to bring the big city to Homer Glen. So if you could take, please take that into consideration and, and stop this project. And I do hear a lot from a lot of different people, all the time. So, thank you very much for hearing us. Thank you.
Hi. I'm John Walters. I live in Homer Glen, about a half mile from 143rd Street. I'm also a current precinct committeeman, Precinct 15. There's two towns here. There's Lockport, and Lockport was a canal town, sleepy little canal town, and it decided that they were on the east side of our town, they were going to become a warehouse district. Well, they changed the flavor of their town. Our town, Homer Glen, is community and nature in harmony. And that's what we want to keep it. You widen this road, the trucks will use it, whether you say it's a truck route or not. They're already using it now. They're using most, a lot of the roads in our town that they shouldn't be using. They just go ahead and use them. Now, if you do that, the speeds are going to increase, you're going to change Homer Glen into a truck route from Lockport and 355 to Cook County. You're going to make us the pass-through for Lockport and 355, for the warehouses in Lockport and 355. That's not what we are in Homer Glen. We try to stay rural. We do not want to be Lockport and 355's truck route to Cook County. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Mark Bararty. I'm an attorney in Homer Glen, and I live in Homer Glen. My office is in Homer Glen, so I spend most of my time in Homer Glen. I live off 159th. I can tell you, taking that left on to 159th, so I can drop my kids off at school every day, it's a gamble. I wouldn't want anybody else on 143rd to have to do that. You guys have a lot more trees. The sightlines are terrible. I know we're going to be chopping down trees, so then we get back to, do we want to be Orland Park or Oak Lawn? Or do we want to be community and nature and harmony? I grew up around, I grew up in 131st and Bell, so it's basically Homer Glen. I mean, I remember when Dominics went in, it was a huge deal. This is obviously many years ago. We, me and my wife moved to Chicago for a while when we were going to school. Where did we invest our money and move back to and start businesses? Homer Glen, for that same reason. I was sick of the traffic, I was sick of the crime. I wanted to, I liked going down 143rd, seeing livestock, it's nice. I liked being able to go to a Bears game in an hour, you know? So like, I, it's a beautiful place where you're half an hour from everything that you want. I don't want us to become Elwood, right? Warehouses. I don't want to back my house up to Chiquita Banana Plant. Like, it's not us. So I just wanted to let you know, and again, I'm going to be putting on a town hall in, I believe it's going to be January 9th, I'm going to be sending out some information to the affected parties, just because none of us really have a clue what's going on. I'm going to bring in an appraiser, and I just want to get everybody on the same page, you know, the affected parties. My own, my own building where my office is, is getting affected. We're on Bell Road where they're going to expand. That was one of the reasons I moved out of Kingston Hills, because I got the notification that they're going to expand the, you know, Bell Road. I don't want to live by a highway, coincidentally, I kind of do, but still, we're a little farther from it. So, just FYI, website I created this morning, it's still under production, quicktake.law, if you want more information. It's, that's all. So just, I appreciate seeing everybody out here, because this is a great turnout. It's a lot better than I thought. And, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
John Belowitz? Harry Manhart? Martha Manhart? Maria Vins? Judith Slapika? Mary Ann Kyler? Good morning, sir.
How you doing? My name is Harry Manhart, and I'm speaking for myself and my mother, Martha Manhart. We are affected both ways. Basically, myself, because I live on 143rd, 14305 South Elizabeth Lane. I'm basically a subdivision in between Pebble Creek and Saddle Brook. Every morning I get out, I can go look out and take my dogs out and look out the back of my house, my backyard, with my coffee, and look at the cows, Alan's Farm, every day. I can look at the snow on the trees. What's going to happen now when they put the wall up? I look at the wall every day. And all the homes, all the way down 143rd, what happens to the livestock, the deer population, when they're coming from the golf course across the street? And now, the cars can't go anywhere because of deer on the road, because they can't cross the street. Next, my mother, who's been living there since the 70s, is being 40 feet of her property is taken away because they're putting a retention pond. We have no idea what that's involved in. What is the process? Next, is the road getting wider? And what about the hill going down where there are so many deaths going on? Are they cutting the hill down? What is going on with the road? We have no real ideas, no real architectural drawings, what's the plan? And everyone wants this done, nobody wants this done. You people are saying they want this done for 20 years or to the long project. I've been here since 10 years old. Everything was open space, environment, trees, land, this is what you live for. This is why we came here, this is why we all came here. I just thank you all, say no for this. Take care and say no.
Good morning. I am Maria Vins, and I also live off of 143rd. I was just reading the core values from the Homer Glen website, and it talks about Homer Glen being a rural atmosphere, and that the concern of everyone in the atmosphere is to preserve the rural atmosphere of it, protect the environment, and to safeguard the appearance and the character of Homer Glen. If you're adding five lanes of traffic, it's certainly going to affect the appearance and the character of Homer Glen, which is the reason we moved out here from the city also. People also talked about, you know, the traffic, and the only thing being able to be done is, you know, giving tickets. We don't have a police department. We are, we have a few county sheriffs, that's who we rely on to protect the community. If you're adding thousands of cars and people, we don't even have the police to police the people that are, you're adding to the environment and the atmosphere. You can read your own website to see that this is, what you're doing is antithetical to what you presented as your core values. And I think everybody in Homer Glen, not just off of 143rd, will be impacted. There's going to be tentacles of crime that just go through Homer Glen. And I think other people, the whole community does oppose it, and we ask that you deny the whole proposal of what you're asking. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a resident of Homer Glen, which is now Homer Glen. I was a Homer Township when I moved in in 1972. So I hate to say that date, because it ages me. Anyway, I just wanted to say and probably repeat what other people have said. And I also have two messages from people who said, knew I was speaking this morning. And I was reminded about the horror of four lanes on 143rd Street. I'm just a walk away from Reed School. And when I went to my mailbox, how dangerous it is now, just for me to go up for my mail. What is it going to be like, as one gentleman mentioned, when we make it a four-lane speed highway? And I was reminded by my neighbor that someone lost their life right in front of her home. She's my neighbor, and the people are speeding, and nobody does 45 miles an hour down, except yours truly and the residents, everyone who's coming from somewhere else. It's a place to throw garbage and also to speed. Anyway, I have one more thing to say, and I was reminded, who exactly is profiting from widening 143rd Street? Certainly not the citizens of Homer Glen and other residents along that roadway. So I just want to keep in mind, as this other gentleman just said, the whole character of our community is going to change by the, it's no longer going to be a rural area. It's, it's again, we're just, be another truck route. Thank you for letting me say my piece. God bless all. Bye now.
Thank you. Okay, folks, we're on the third page with seven names. Mary Ann Kyler, Madeline Hernandez, Connie and Robin Brink, Jacqueline Bonds, Kathy Hines, and Ralph Elvian. Please work your way down if you'd like to speak on 143rd. Anyone else in the audience wanting to speak? Why don't we just go ahead and line up now? Otherwise, I will go to public comment that was submitted via email after these three folks. Thank you. Good morning. Hi, my name is Madeline Hernandez.
I live on 143rd and Kitty Corn of King Road. And there was a bad, tragic accident in front of my home, and two people were killed. And it's just, it's like a Speedway. And I just, it's just so changed since I moved here in 1967. And I would like to, the board, to really consider this center lane instead of a four-lane, because it's very dangerous for our community. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jacqueline Bonds, and I have the first house on 143rd Street, one block east of Parker. So this will come right up to my garage. I moved to Homer Glen because I love the atmosphere. Their motto was, the trees and environment. And environment is one of the major things in our national government, and now we're cutting down trees, and we're letting trucks with all the exhaust fumes come past our lovely homes. So I'm opposed to that. I'm also opposed to the value of my property that I will lose when this road comes right up to my garage. And so I really request that we save you all money by canceling this project and allowing us to have our lovely, beautiful Homer Glen. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Kathy Hines, and my husband and I have been in Homer Glen for 40 years. We moved out to Homer Glen because we wanted to live in the country. We are in the subdivision just east of Reed School. We are very concerned about this project, not only for our own personal reasons, which will be noise and traffic, but for the schools that are there. We have a daycare on 143rd with Bobby Noonan with the kids playing right in that backyard. We also have three farms, like that was mentioned earlier. This is a big concern for our community, and we have to protect our community. I have a suggestion for you. I agree with everyone that was here. People speed down that street like you wouldn't believe. It's, it is 45 miles an hour. I would say we lower it to 35, put a cop there for about a month or two, and people will not take that route anymore unless they have no choice, like I do, because I live on there. People will move to 159th Street where they can travel, hopefully not at 70, but at 45 or 55 miles an hour that that road allows. It's, it is extremely dangerous right now. Maybe a turn lane will help, but I know what will help, and that's a reduced speed limit and enforcement of the speeds. People will go to 159th. Trust me, they will. Because they're not going to want to do 30 or 35 miles an hour on 143rd. And only the people that live there will travel on that road. We have, we have, and I do agree with somebody earlier with Archer, that's the other, most common place to, you know, widen the road, is Archer Avenue. There's already a lot of truck traffic on that road. So I beg you to really consider this, and consider the residents and their property values, but more than anything else, consider the safety of the children, of the homeowners, of the animals. It's a big deal. And I thank you for your time. I really, really appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, folks, that took the time out of their day to come here and speak to this committee. At this time, Sandy, would you please read off the public comments concerning 143rd that were directed to you via email?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
This one is from James Evans. Says, "I'm against this expansion. It will cause unnecessary congestion and truck traffic through my neighborhood." This one is from Laura McNulty. "All of us chose to live in this boring country setting because we wanted a slice of heaven. I'm not saying that it's heaven, but it's close enough. Expanding our roads is not the answer to anyone's prayers who live here. We do not want light pollution, noise pollution, air pollution, or land grabs." This one is from Don and Joe Joan Varansky. "I am not supporting widening of the street. 158th Street is, was just made four lanes and trucks can use that road. Making 143rd one lane with turn lanes is not necessary, and adding trucks would make it worse." This one is from Deborah Belansky. It says, "As long as Homer Glen residents wish to voice their opposition on the proposed 143rd Street expansion and truck route, we live in oak estates off 143rd and Bell Road and know that this will bring unwanted noise and dangerous traffic to our area. We choose to live here in the open space and quiet and think it is a major step backwards for the township." Thank you. I'm totally against the expansion, oh, I'm sorry, this is from Lisa Butt. "I'm totally against the expansion of 143rd Street. I moved to Homer Glen to get away from the congested traffic and noise. Now all I see are new developments of all these new townhomes and new roads. Homer Glen is known for open space and farms. I'm really disappointed with the way this town is changing. No sense in paying these high taxes here if it is going to turn into Cook County." This one is from Gail Egan, and it says, "No, no, 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 no." Like that. This one is for, that was something that's got put in there wrong. This one is from Bob Schmidt. "We are totally against the expansion of 143rd Street. We believe this will become a major safety hazard for the residents of Homer Glen. Please stop this project." This one is from Marlene Carmen. It said, "I voted against the expansion of 143rd Street as a truck route for numerous safety reasons, including the fact that the residential homes and working stables, farms, and farm equipment pull or back out on 143rd Street. We have working horse farm along 143rd, which is our therapeutic riding program for special needs children." This is from Lisa Butt. "I'm totally against the expansion of 143rd Street. I moved to Homer Glen to get away from the congested traffic and noise. Now all I see are new developments of all these new townhomes and new roads. Homer Glen is known for open space and farms. I'm really disappointed with the way this town is changing. No sense in paying these high taxes here if it is going to turn into Cook County." This one is from Gail Egan, and it says, "No, no, 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 no." Like that. This one is for... That was something that's got put in there wrong. This one is from Bob Schmidt. "We are totally against the expansion of 143rd Street. We believe this will become a major safety hazard for the residents of Homer Glen. Please stop this project." This one is from Marlene Carmen. It said, "I voted against the expansion of 143rd Street as a truck route for numerous safety reasons, including the fact that the residential homes and working stables, farms, and farm equipment pull or back out on 143rd Street. We have working horse farm along 143rd, which is our therapeutic riding program for special needs children in the community and veterans." Dr. R.J. Duncan. "I'm against this expansion." This one is from... It just says Esther. "I moved to Homer Glen 30 years ago because I wanted the country setting. 151st Street is a, was a gravel and then, a gravel and then it stopped at 143rd or Bell. I realize villagers, villages must grow with the times, however, Homer Glen Village has gotten ridiculous. 151st Street has become a racetrack between Cedar and Gauger. All of these trees on Gauger have been destroyed, that the truck, that the mighty truck companies could build higher and uglier buildings instead of nice wooded area. Now they're looking, looking at widening 143rd to make it look like Orland Park, so that the truckers have someplace to go. I am really getting sick of everybody's bending over backwards for the trucking companies and turning, and turning this town into a mini Orland Park. Nature in harmony does not work with everybody. Everything is being done for trucking companies. Ever since 355 was put in, it has been a nightmare here. Please don't disrupt the life of people that live at, on 143rd so trucks can go by and make it easier for them. We are not living in harmony any longer. I'm still unable to get the speed limit reduced on 151st Street so that people can go back, can back out of their driveways without becoming roadkill. Please, please do not change 143rd Street anymore. It has already been changed enough. Thank you." Okay, this is from Kathy Chidachimo. "I moved to Homer Glen 50 years ago as a child with my parents when it was still an unincorporated section of Lockport Township. Most of the roads in the area were gravel except for the state roads. We moved to a rural community from the south side of Chicago because we loved open space, nature, and my father was looking for a safe community and good schools for me to continue growing into adulthood. We rode our horses on many paths that lined the gravel roads without fear of cars flying by at 45 miles per hour. With that being said, Homer Glen is no longer the true rural community it once was. That's okay. A little progress can sometimes be good without completely taking away from the heart of the community. Regardless, regarding the expansion of 143rd Street, we have many roads in the area that allow trucks for deliveries. The west end of 143rd Street and 159th Street have become direct access to 355 and Gauger Road that runs north and south. Please do not widen 143rd Street to save a mile for trucks to access the east side of the community. Homes were built very close to 143rd Street, and a school is also located near the road. The people of Homer Glen that live on 143rd Street and the school should not be forced to deal with the disruption and noise and light pollution that will affect their homes and lives, nor should you take away the beauty of the area of Homer Glen by building another four-lane street with all the increased traffic along the residential road. There are two stoplights with turn lanes as you approach the commercial area on 143rd, and it nears Bell Road, and many people feel that the widening of the road to accommodate an hour of rush, an hour of rush hour traffic in the morning and evening is not necessary, nor is it fair to the rest of the community. People in this community do not want Homer Glen to turn into Lockport or Orland Park." This is from Lauren Kovar. Said, "I am a resident with property right on 143rd and would like to understand the specific details of what is being proposed. Could somebody please send me the full information?" This is from Debbie Tavagenny. It said, "I live on 143rd at Saddleback Lane. If you expand, a divider with, will be put in, and it will be difficult to get in and out of the subdivisions. I am also, it will also cause more traffic along with semi-trucks. We will no longer be living in a nice, quiet community." Michael Barbalak. Last thing, last thing needed is more communities being ruined, ruined by more traffic and trucks, bringing their dangerous and noise, bringing their danger and noise. Lee Katz. "My wife and I live near Parker and 151st. We already experience heavy traffic on 143rd, especially in the late afternoon. Thanks for hearing our perspective." Gregory Mahalik. "I am totally against the proposed expansion of 143rd to Homer Township. Not only is it unnecessary to expand this road to two lanes in each direction, I would also, it would also decrease the quality of life for the community and our children. One of the needs, the, one only needs to look at 159th to see this type of expansion will not only make the street more like the superhighway, but would lead to more reckless driving. Currently, just driving on 159th at the speed limit seems to be risky in most, and mostly everyone driving way faster and weaving around other cars. This situation, this is a situation where an accident is just waiting to happen. We do not want to see this happen on 143rd Street where the existing housing is much closer to the roadway. Let's not destroy the beauty of the area of Homer Township and decrease the safety of our residents by expanding 143rd Street." This is from John O'Malley. "I'm against widening 143rd Street. Leave Parker Road and Chicago Bloomington Trail alone." "I am reading the information concerning the proposed 143rd expansion project. I support the alternative proposal of a center turning lane plus one lane in each direction." Kathy Miller. "Both my husband and I are against the expansion." Thank you. Ken Gunnike. "In regards to Hadley Road, Chai Bloom Trail project, I am a new resident to Will County and have them, and have moved out of Cook County less than two and a half years ago. I specifically moved to the rural historic Parker Hadley area because of the quiet, beautiful, peaceful nature. I stand 100% against any kind of change to our ecosystem that will undoubtedly disrupt forests, forests full of old growth trees and endanger and threatening species that inhabit them, not to mention unnecessary disturbances of people's property, many of which are historically significant to the area. These roads are fine as it is and do not need to be upgraded or carry truck traffic or increased traffic, traffic for that in any manner, when there are plenty of other main thoroughfa, thoroughways in the area that are better suited for expansion or carrying traffic that isn't lined with beautiful homes and farms. These roads are wide, these roads are widening country roads and need to stay widening country roads. Don't become Cook County." Deana Haskins. "Destruction of mature tree canopy on Hadley Road. These trees are not replaceable in, are, in our area at this time due to constant development. Preserve what is already growing, and there are other corridors for traffic expansion." Jeffrey Magus, Magiruski. "Just wanted to voice my thoughts on this matter. I feel the expansion would be a waste of tax money. Our Homer Glen small-town charm is just doing fine and well. What does our village motto say? Nature, living with people. Let's keep it that way. Let's not become like Orland Park and New Lennox, please. I moved out from Chicago after 35 years to find a peaceful setting. Please do not change it. Vote no for the expansion, please. Thank you for your time and service." This is from Maria Conway. Respectfully voting no. This one just says Jeffrey. It says, "I just wanted to voice my thoughts on this matter. I feel the expansion would be a waste of tax money. Our Homer Glen small-town charm is just doing fine and well. What does our village motto say? Nature, living with people. Let's keep it that way. Let's not become like Orland Park or New Lennox." Please, please vote no. Jessica Salucky. "We are writing today to express our opposition to 143rd Street. We live in Derby Hills, and this will cause more unnecessary traffic than we already have and will ruin our suburban town feeling. Our town already has 159th Street that is turning into a highway since it has been expanded. Over the last month, we've seen three deers killed that were hit by cars. I don't need another road like 140, 159th Street in our town. Roads like this do harm to residents, property value, animals, environment. We do agree 143rd Street needs to be fixed and redone. We recommend adding a middle turn lane to help the traffic flow and, and avoid it turning into a truck route." Thank you. Charlene Witkowski. "I am very concerned over the potential expansion of 143rd Street in Homer Glen. I have lived east of Parker Road in Donwood Commu, Donwood Community for just over a year. I was quite surprised at the traffic noise, including ambulance and fire truck sirens. I never realized how busy the street is. It appears the proposed proposal to widen 143rd will not only increase regular traffic, but encourage truck traffic as well. Yes, property values are a huge concern. Living in the city and hearing traffic is expected. Living in a quiet suburb with constant traffic noise will definitely impact the value of our homes. More importantly, the safety of introducing more traffic is a concern and should be addressed. At times, it is challenging trying to exit my development. I can only imagine how it will impact myself and my neighbors. Please reconsider this proposal for the sake of the residents who truly love this neighborhood." Richard Frothinham. I think we heard from him. "After reading the information concerning the proposal on the 143rd Street expansion, I support the alternative proposal of a center lane plus one lane in each direction." Kristy Nader. Hello, I would like to vote no on 143rd Street proposal expansion. I live in Homer Glen. Ms. Conway. Vote no, please. Virginia Swanson Urbansky. "The Hadley Road is completely unnecessary despite the fact that the roads have been remodeled, have not been remodeled in 40 years. First, they are in good condition. Drive it, and you will agree. Secondly, all of us are moving here for a quaint ruralness of the area. We do not want to look like Orland Park, or we would have lived there, which brings up the 143rd expansion. Why would anybody think it is a good idea to encourage more traffic, especially trucks to this road? Again, this is one of the few roads that can be traveled and see sheep peacefully grazing. We, the people who actually live in the area, want to remain, want it to remain the same. We do not want to become an industrial-like area. As a voter, and the public officials are supposed to be representing our wishes, please stop this, please stop these changes to replicate what Orland Park has unfortunately Joan Brunza. "I am contacting you to let you know I am strongly opposed to the expansion of 143rd Street in Homer Glen. Since I am a senior citizen and cannot attend the meeting, I want my voice heard. I've lived here since 1976, and we have had many changes in the Homer's rural atmosphere. Change is inevitable, but when it becomes a danger to the community, the residents have an obligation to speak up. There are two school service, two schools serviced by school buses and a church along, along 143rd, which will be greatly impacted. The increased traffic, especially trucks, propose a danger to children and residents. The noise pollution and the volume of vehicles is bound to increase significantly. Homer Glen does not have the commercial businesses that warrant widening 143rd Street. We are mostly a residential area. You were elected by the residents here to support our goals, not to discard, not to disregard our voices for those who have no stake, no stake in the community. We live here. Our community future depends on your decision." Allow, oh, allow Homer Township residents to be the deciding factor when it comes to maintaining a self, safe environment for our elderly, our parents, especially our children. Tony Seija. "I oppose, I'm opposed to 143rd Street being a truck access." Carol Geiderann. "Please do not widen 143rd Street beyond one lane in each direction with a middle turning lane. We are a residential neighborhood without commercial areas requiring a wider road area. We have elementary schools on the street and have semi-trucks using these street, these streets would be hazardous. Continue the road as, as it currently is east of Bell Road on 143rd." Patera Conway. "I am writing to vote against the proposed expansion. We moved here 18 months ago, corner of 151st and Cedar Road. The commercial activity starts at 4:30 a.m. Seven-ton weight truck limit blatantly disregarded and worked around by savvy drivers. It is a sad day when you move to a community and have two immediate express operations perfectly placed commercial access points, 143rd and 159th, two miles apart. The Cedar Road is the chosen path for trucks to avoid local tolls. Cars, yes, but 12-gear diesel, et cetera, are abnormal. It's an abnormal alarm clock. 159th Street is already a racing track, and 143rd is the last route to the pleasant drive into Homer Glen. Please ensure my vote is recorded as a firm opposition to the proposed expans, expansion. Respectfully, I vote no." John La Valley. "I don't want 143rd Street expanded. 159th is enough. There are way too many semis driving through Homer Glen as it is. Why don't you put it on a ballot?" Jo Miskeli. My name is Jo. I have lived at Pebble Creek, Homer Glen, with my wife, Mary, for 31 years. We first heard of 143rd Expansion. Although it would cause a temporary travel issue, we like the idea of making improvements to our town and possibly increasing our property value as well. Hearing that the main of the reasons for this project is to use 143rd Street as a truck route has left us confused and disappointed with our village. Asking our community to be burdened with the price of this project, be inconvenienced with a year or so of unnecessary road construction is just wrong. We are, as community members for 31 years, are informing you that we are not in favor of this project and ask you to discontinue the project immediately. Crystal Rank. I am reaching out to request you stop 143rd Street expansion and potential truck route, Homer Glen. As a teacher whose school is off of 143rd, I worry about the safety of my students. As a mother, I worry about my own children. Please consider other options that do not involve this expansion. Kathy Lilo. No expansion of 143rd Street. Greg Vojavadun. Please take the following recommendations. For the record, the community of Homer Glen would be better served if the county had held these types of public meetings periodically over the last five years when the engineering plans for the project were being developed. Unfortunately, the opportunity has passed. The mandatory show-and-tell presentations that were held by the WCDOT did not sufficiently deal with the public's concerns. Written concerns were encouraged, but only selective answers were provided, and a lot of specific concerns were never addressed. The project's design phase is now complete, and it is doubtful that any major changes will be considered. But hopefully, some of the small ones can still be made to help ease the adverse impact in the project that we have in our community. Number one, reduce the speed limit through Homer Glen. Reduce the speed limit on 143rd Street to 35 miles per hour through the residential areas and 40 miles per hour through the commercial agricultural areas. Reducing the speed limits will increase public safety and the level of traffic noise affecting the community. Most traffic noise is generated from the friction of the vehicle's tires riding on the pavement and from the number of vehicles using the road. Higher-speed traffic and volume equally sufficient make it higher road values, or levels. Lower speed limits equal reduced noise. Tractor, trailer trucks are louder than small trucks and cars. The sound wall that is included in the project will help, but it is not enough. The wall will reflect and reduce traffic noise for some of our residents, but will not eliminate it. Include a few more traffic signs along the route. Install a few more traffic signs at the intersections, at subdivision entrances that currently do not have them. In addition, traffic signs will be a better control of the flow of traffic through our community, discourage excessive speeding, and allow pedestrians the opportunity to safely cross 143rd Street at more locations. Restrict the limit truck traffic. Truck, trailer traffic should be restricted by... I'm not sure what that is. Ideally, the majority of truck traffic would only be allowed on 159th Street. Joan Venza. I am contacting you to let you know that I am strongly opposed to the expansion of 143rd Street. Since I'm... Oh, I think we heard from her, too. She wasn't able to attend today. John Rosenstein. This expansion you want is all wrong. You want to bring more traffic to that area. It's mainly residential and commercial. We don't need 80,000-pound freight trucks going through here. If you think this is great, buy a house in the area. We are tired of hearing how changing things for economic development is good. It's time to quit spending money. Taking 60-foot frontage from residents is a real crime. Taking 60-foot frontage from residents is a real crime.